Yes, sir. Okay. Everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay. Let's get going here. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council of the City of Lenore to order. I welcome you here this evening for Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022. We're glad to have you. As we get ready to start, in a few minutes, we'll have our moment of silence and we'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Before we go there, I would like to go ahead and let's call the role of everyone who's here this evening and anyone that we may have on Zoom. We do have some of our department heads that will be involved in that. So we'll start with our council members, and I'll start with Mr. Beal and come around, if you will, please.
Jonathan Beal here.
Mike Perkins here.
David Stevens.
Joe Gibbons.
Chrissy Thomas.
Todd Purdue.
Ralph Prescott.
Kent Greer.
Thank you. Shirley Canner, City Clerk is here. Joshua Harris, our Communications Director is here. I'll get the guys in the back. Radford Thomas, our Public Utilities Director, and Fire Chief Ken Hare is here, and Police Chief Brent Phelps is here as well. Okay, then I will call on the Zoom, please. City Attorney TJ Rohr.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Oh, and our City Manager Scott Hildebrand is here. Didn't get you on that. Finance Director Donna Bean.
Here.
Thank you. Economic Development Main Street Director Kaylin Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Story.
I'm here, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Planning Director Jenny Wheelock.
I'm here. Sorry, can you get it unmuted?
All right, thank you. And interim, our interim Public Works Director Ed Evans.
I am here, Mayor Gibbons, and I apologize for not being there.
Well, that's okay. You're great. We appreciate that. All right. Thank you. I think that, is there anybody else on Zoom? We welcome the press is here. Thank you for being with us. Anyone else on Zoom that I did not call? Okay, thank you. Then we have some others here, and we'll get to those when we get to that part of the agenda. First of all, as we get started tonight on our moment of silence, and before we go to that, I would like to congratulate our Police Department on the wrangling of Emu, Kevin the Emu. Thank you, guys, for taking care of that. The Emu wandered in from 30 miles from Moravian Falls to our community, and I know our guys did a good job. Looked like on the news today that some of the kids had a good time with the Emu. Apparently, it was a well-trained pet and was fun for the kids to see that. So thank you, guys, for doing that. And let me make a couple of awards that we have here. The City of Lenore won a couple of communications awards. The two excellence in communications awards from the North Carolina City and County Communicators, that's NC3C. Our Communication and Public Information Director Joshua Harris is here with us, submitted the awards on behalf of the city. We won second place in the general competition, composition writing for the piece, "Single Family Homes Going Up in Lenore." This was the last of a three-part series on housing. The article focused on new construction in the city, obstacles housing developers face, and ways the city staff were working to help bring new homes to our community. The other one, we won second also in social media. This for general use on a single platform for the City of Lenore Facebook page. The city communications staff have worked consistently to grow the city's audience on Facebook by posting content that is relevant and interesting to the residents and the public. In 2021, the city's followers grew by 22%, and all other Facebook metrics increased significantly due to the engaging content. NC3C is a professional association of municipal and county commuters in North Carolina. Director Harris has been involved with the NC3C since the organization was founded in 2007 by 27 local government communicators. He has served his multiple terms as Treasurer, President-elect, and President, and is currently past president for the group. And today, NC3C has more than 120 members across the state. So thank you very much. Joshua, we appreciate that. And moving our communications and things forward, you do a great job of that, and we thank you. We appreciate it. The awards are right here on the podium, if you'd like to see those later on. Yes, sir.
I would. I'd like to also recognize, and on behalf of the City Council and the employees of the city, we'd like to congratulate Mayor Gibbons for being elected the Chairman of the North Carolina Mayors Association. So congratulations on that.
Very honored to do that and proud to be involved with it. So we hope we'll keep that growing as well across the state, but thank you for that. All right, please now join us for our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda tonight is a special recognition for our Police Department. We have Mr. Matthew Sales, the Public Safety Risk Management Consultant for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, who will be presenting a certificate to Chief Brent Phelps following the department's onsite review for risk management. A law enforcement risk review is to assess an agency's adherence to best practices, court decisions, policies, and procedures related to liability activities in law enforcement. The goal is to mitigate liability exposures, enhance officer safety, and validate that training and operating procedures are meeting industry standards. The risk management review is designed and peer-reviewed by a panel of police chiefs representing a cross-section of North Carolina law enforcement agencies and is available to those agencies who participate in the league's property and liability insurance pool. Matthew, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Gibbons and Lenore City Council for this time in recognizing the Lenore Police Department for completing the North Carolina League's law enforcement risk review management process. Now, again, my name is Matthew Sales. I am the Public Safety Risk Management Consultant with the League. I've been with the League since May of 2019, and I just want to go a little bit into what the risk review does and what it's about. Number one, it's thousands of hours of work between myself and the Police Department, and a lot of work is put into this process. Now, the risk review involves a comprehensive agency review of high-risk policies, operations, and procedures, and practices, and includes a detailed onsite administrative and operations review, including looking at equipment. We inspect the facility. We do officer interviews. We observe officers in operations, i.e., I ride along with the officers. And I did that one day when I was here. All to validate practices aligned with policies and in turn with the industry's best practices. We specifically look at high-risk liability areas within a police department, and that would include, like I said, vehicle operations, response to act of resistance, use-of-force type training, evidence processing, employment practices and procedures and training. In addition to many other categories, there's 39 categories in all that we look at through this risk review process. Now, this risk review is supported by the North Carolina Associations of Chiefs of Police, and I'm proud to report this evening that the Lenore Police Department has successfully completed the law enforcement risk review process. The chief, the command staff, and the department's officers prioritized this initiative and made this process a department policy priority. The department was very proactive and involved during the whole process. I want to personally thank Chief Phelps and the department's command staff for all their hard work and for their leadership and their willingness to participate in this very important initiative. They were very open and transparent during the whole process of the risk review. Now, I myself have spent 25 years in law enforcement. If anybody knows this community, Troutman, North Carolina, and Iredo County, I was the police chief there for 12 years. And prior to that, I worked for Iredo County Sheriff's Office for 11, and then prior to that, State's full Police Department. So when I say that the chief, I've worked with him and a lot of chiefs across the state, and Chief Phelps sits on our North Carolina League Advisory Committee too as well. I noticed that he is great. He demonstrates a good level of leadership with his department and other best practices. And we have a plaque to present this evening with, to the Police Department. This is a plaque, and I heard that you guys went to the conference this last week.
Yes.
While I was out in the field still working and all that. But again, it recognizes the Lenore Police Department for completing the law enforcement risk review process and proactively serving the community in a professional manner. And it was, it's dated today, May 3rd, 2022. And I'd like to congratulate the department, Chief Phelps, and the City of Lenore for completing this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You want to come down or you want us to do it back here?
It's better if you come down.
Okay. All right, we'll do that.
Yeah. There's seals up there. Okay.
Let's organize by age, youngest to oldest. Somebody, yeah, somebody get in the middle there. Yeah, Ralph or I can get in the middle there.
I can't see, I expect.
Black coming there.
There we go.
You good? All right. That might turn. I've got a flash. Okay. All right. We'll do a couple with a flash and then a couple without. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. And then another flash. Ready? One, two, three.
Disgusting heads back here, Chief. We'll get through with that.
That's okay.
You wouldn't know about that, but...
I'm gonna leave that alone. I just want to take a quick second and thank Matthew for his help with our department through the league in completing the risk assessment. Excuse me, I felt that coming on. He was very helpful from the first time, a couple of years ago, when we met, me and one of the captains sat down with him to kind of go over, okay, here's what you need, here's what you're looking at. And so, Matthew, I appreciate you helping us through the process. It took a little longer than we were anticipating. This little thing called a worldwide pandemic happened and things slowed down, and, you know, we had to focus for a little while on just day-to-day stuff. But back in the fall, we kind of picked back up, and Captain Stillwell, Lieutenant Robinson, Sergeant Bumgarner, and a couple of other supervisors took the task and said, I don't want us to focus on any other major project till we get this done. And they jumped on it and worked with him weekly in getting policies and things taken care of. And so I appreciate their hard work in it. Yes, sir.
How often do you go through this process?
Three years.
Three years?
Every three years. And so it helps keep us, as things change, it helps keep us to stay current. And then in talking to some other chiefs, the state is working on some state accreditation. There's a huge portion of the stuff that we've completed with this that is tentatively on the things for state accreditation. So if at some point in the future, we decide to look at that, too, this will have already put us in a good spot.
Yeah, come on, yeah. Because we're going TV.
I've worked with the Police Chiefs Association Director and the new CJ Standards Director, and they are really pushing to get that program started July 1st. So the money's there, it's just got to get everybody, get the ball rolling and stuff.
Right.
So that'll be great. Like Chief said, this risk review was shared with the state, so they're right in line with getting that accreditation. So it's kind of like two things for the department stuff.
Good.
The, there is a, it's not the reason you do it, obviously, because you want your high-risk liability areas to be at best practice. But there is a benefit. There's a financial benefit for members of the league. There's a 14% reduced insurance cost for the department. The police professional liability coverage, thank you, with that. And every little bit that we can save, especially in doing our job, is a good thing. So that's not the number-one reason you want to do it, but there is some financial impact there as well. Proud of our folks and our supervisors that got the work done and completed it.
If you're adherent to those practices and policies, might as well get something for it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Particularly with budget numbers the way they go.
That's good.
And they've really done a lot of work over the past two years, and when they finally were able to get it rolled out, it made my process so much smoother, and I was, I'm impressed, you know, with the way that they have organized all their policies. It's a great program you guys use. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for all you're doing in your department. Matthew, thank you for being here tonight, and we are proud members of the North Carolina League, proud to be a part of it, and we appreciate everything that you do, and the league does to work with us.
I'm glad you guys were able to attend last week. I heard it was a very great conference. Mayor asked about, told me about the presentation, the Scotten Plaque you did on the, I am working with Chief Brown, Detective Chief Brown of the Community College. We have that training set up, a four-hour block of training at the Royal Center, June 16th. You all are invited. If the manager would send that invite, you can register for the class. If somebody could register.
It probably would be a good thing. From what we saw in that, our class that we had down there, it was, it would be very beneficial for probably all of us to be there.
And you guys had a particular incident, so it'd be good for everybody to get up to speed on that.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have several proclamations to do tonight, so we'll come down and get started with that. Of course, our first is a special recognition from the City Council to present a proclamation to Chief Phelps proclaiming the week of May 7, 11th through the 17th as Peace Officers' Memorial Week throughout the City of Lenore. Sunday, May 15th will be observed as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and there will be an Officer Down Memorial Service will be held on Thursday, May 12th at 6:00 around the Officer Down Monument located in front of the Caldwell County Courthouse. The honor guard from both the Lenore Police Department and the Caldwell County Sheriff's Department will perform both rifle volley and flag presentations to honor those who have paid the supreme sacrifice. There will also be placement of wreaths. So please put those dates on your calendar as we do that. Our first tonight to be presented is the, as we talked about, the recognition of Peace Officers' Memorial Week, May the 11th through the 17th. Chief, I'm gonna cut it down a little bit because we have five to do, but we certainly don't want to change anything on it. But whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those inside the City of Lenore, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and now it is resolved that we observe the week of the 11th through the 17th as Police Week with the appropriate ceremonies, and we proclaim that May 15th, 2022, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service of the community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And we do this on behalf of the City Council. Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will, let's do this one, and I'm gonna do the motorcycle, and we'll shoot a picture together with that, if that's okay. And our second one is that we are proclaiming Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, which is May 2022, whereas the growth in popularity of motorcycle riding and touring combined with the many scenic destinations in our state and the year-long riding season have led to the, North Carolina having one of the largest populations of motorcycle enthusiasts in the nation, and whereas more and more residents of the City of Lenore are taking up this mode of transportation to communicate, to commute to, and from their places of employment. And whereas many motorcyclists undergo specialized training by attending professionally taught motorcycle operating training courses, whereas it is a responsibility of all motorists to be aware of motorcyclists and extend to them the same courtesy as other vehicles on our highway. And we proclaim this as the month of May, as, on behalf of the City Council, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Chief? Thank you. I'll let you speak, and then we'll shoot a picture for both proclamations.
Do you want to do the picture for the proclamations all at one time with the others once the council comes down?
We could do that. Why don't we, is that all right?
Are they off of the, are they off of the chief's belt?
No, we got police, and then we've got several others.
But I can step over here and...
Yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, we can do the pictures all at once, and we'll have each one do that.
That'll be good. We'll do the proclamations, and then we'll...
That way, that way you guys don't have to come down, go up, come down, come up. Very quickly for these, obviously, the Police Memorial Week is a special week for us in law enforcement. I want to invite you, I know the manager had sent out the email invitation, the FOP puts that on. We have officers, the Sheriff's Department, all four agencies will have officers involved in that. If you have plans and can attend, we encourage it. It is a special moment. Unfortunately, we have two names. It's been a while, but we have two names that we'll recognize that night from the Police Department. The Sheriff's Department has some names. Obviously, Deputy Klutz is the most recent from '08, but this, I wish we didn't have to have a week to recognize the sacrifice. But it is part of this job, and the part that makes me the proudest is we have a building full of men and women that realize every day they come to work, it could be their last day of seeing their family, and they still come in every day. And that level of commitment, I can't buy, I can't pay for, I can't get. It's something that they have inside of them to say, I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna serve. And as you can see, it is special to me, that level of commitment and service from our men and women that come out and serve our community, but thank you for recognizing them. For the motorcycle safety, we live in a beautiful area of North Carolina that folks enjoy riding in the foothills and in the mountains. We have a lot of motorcycle traffic that comes through, and so we just want to recognize that activity in our community in a safe way. And so thank you for those proclamations.
Thank you, Chief, for all you do. Next on our agenda is, we'll be presenting a special recognition on behalf of the City Council to Chief Ken Hare for the Lenore Fire Department proclaiming Wednesday, May the 4th as International Firefighters' Day throughout the City of Lenore. May the 4th be with you. On this day, the public is encouraged to remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of us all. Chief, this is in honor of International Firefighters' Day, whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May the 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas regardless of the language that the firefighter speaks, or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas the firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike, and whereas the demands of firefighting are accompanied by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. We now proclaim that Wednesday, May the 4th, 2022, as International Firefighters' Day throughout the City of Lenore, and encourage all citizens to show support and appreciation to our city, county, and state firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year, and by remembering past firefighters who have dedicated their lives to preserve our safety. Chief, thank you very much. We appreciate what you do every day to protect us, and we want to honor you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. May 4th is International Firefighters' Day. It is set aside to honor those that have given the ultimate sacrifice, but it's also a day to thank the current men and women that serve our communities to protect us and our properties and our wildfires. This is basically where it started, was in Australia, from wildfires where several folks lost their lives. But I want to let you know how proud I am of the men and women that we have currently serving at Lenore Fire Department, as well as you all should be too. Just like the chief said, they come in every day, could be their last with the jobs that we do, but they do it because it's in their heart. It's not money, and it's not fame, it's nothing else. But I want to let them know how much I appreciate the efforts and sacrifice they do from their families to support our city, and just want to thank them every day, not just tomorrow. So thank you all, and thank to our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next, I got the wrong one. Got them out of order. Next is, I will be asking our Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas to come forward. This is a special recognition that the council will be honoring, proclaiming the week of May 1st through the 7th as Celebrate Drinking Water Week throughout the City of Lenore, and we want to do that. And Radford, I'll read this proclamation and share it with you. Proclamation in celebration of Drinking Water Week, whereas water is our most valuable and natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low morality mortality rates, mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related in access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of the City of Lenore is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now, we proclaim that the week of May 1st through the 7th as Celebrate Drinking Water Week throughout the City of Lenore. Radford?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you always having great water for us. And other things.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say how proud I am of the people that work in our department that produce and distribute this water, day in, day out, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. They really work hard, and they make sure that what we have is the best quality and the safest drinking water that they can possibly provide. Source water protection is one of the main things for us. The river's really important, and what we can do as citizens and stewards of our land is to make sure that we're doing the right things to protect our source water, to ensure that we are able to treat and have safe drinking water for everybody. We have great folks working for the city in this department, and I'm real proud of
Thank you, Radford, and we have one more to do. And this is a special recognition on behalf of the City Council, will present this proclamation to, will presenting it to Radford tonight. Ed is with us on Zoom, but we're proclaiming the week of May 15th through the 21st as National Public Works Week throughout the City of Lenore. The theme for this year's celebration is Ready and Resilient. R and R, how about that? Proclamation in honor of National Public Works Week, whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Lenore. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could... these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for all our citizens. And whereas it, it is in the best public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Lenore to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And we do proclaim that May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of agencies and the American Public Works Association in all the activities and ceremonies. Radford? Again, thank you very much. And Ed, as well, thank you. Know your own Zoom ones.
Mayor, can I speak? Mayor, can I speak?
Yes, sir. Please do.
I apologize again for not being there, but just wanted to note that the public works is very much on the front lines of service with and for the citizens of Lenore, and we all know that municipalities are basically service organizations for our citizens, and they pay for and expect and deserve the citizen, the, the, our citizens deserve, pay for, expect, and deserve the services that we provide. Apologize. So, we strive for excellence in what we do and services we provide, but never take for granted that we have arrived. And this is very much a team effort. I think the city can be very proud of the team that it has assembled. We have a great staff in every department, and they're very dedicated individuals. And we pledge to continue to provide good service, being prepared and ready, while also expecting and preparing for the unexpected, being resilient in all that we do. So, I want to thank you, council and mayor, for that proclamation. I will pass this on to the staff.
Thank you very much, Ed. We appreciate that. Radford? Good, okay. We appreciate, Ed, that you have filled in so well for us as our interim Public Works Director, and thank you for what you're doing with all of our employees.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alright, let's shoot some pictures now. Chief Phelps, we'll start with you and the proclamations. Ed, council, come down and we'll do them all together.
Oh, yeah, chief in the middle.
You want to hold book on him or?
Yeah, hold it. Mayor can hold one.
I'll hold one.
Y'all like that, I think.
That's good, that's good. Going back to your space. Alrighty.
Alright, my turn.
Say "chicken on board."
No, I'm sorry, Dan.
One, two, three, one, two, three, and a couple without the flash, like, oh, yes, one, two, three. Alright.
Next. Chief Hare?
I mean, probably, but I don't do that. My turn. Councilman Perkins, you want to step to your right, just there.
One, two, three, flash, one, two, three, flash, no flash.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Radford and the mayor will hold his and the public, is that alright?
Put Ed's face on red.
Yeah, I'll photoshop Ed on there.
I'll, I'll leave his face for him.
We can do, we can always get Ed on Zoom and go stand by the Zoom.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Done.
Alright, one, two, three, flash, flash, no flash.
Good deal. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
That's it. Yeah.
They need to spread these things out over the years.
I know, but everything seems to fall in May.
Alright, thank you. We will move on to, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, which consist of A, minutes of our city council meeting of Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Item B is an authorizing resolution for the Lenore Greenway Extension Park Connection Project. This is a recommendation to endorse the application for the STP-DA program and commit to a 20% cash match in the amount of $433,550 for the project by adopting the attached resolution. The resolution will authorize the Lenore Planning Department to submit up to three applications to the Greater Hickory Metropolitan Planning Organiz- Organization, known as the GHMPO, for Surface Transportation Program. Direct Appointment Funding, which is STP-DA, funds for the Lenore Greenway Extension, the Park Connection Project, segments 1 through 5, in the amount of $2,167,750. Item C is an amendment for a sub-recipient agreement with Yokefellow Incorporated. This would be an approval requested by the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to, to amend the sub-recipient agreement between the city of Lenore and the Caldwell County Yokefellow Incorporated. A note, this addendum will reallocate $50,764.11 from the first agreement signed on, on August 28th, 2020, to the second agreement signed on October 21st, 2020. Reallocating this funding will allow Caldwell County Yokefellow Incorporated to meet the demands and to use the additional funding to pay for activities described in the second agreement. Item D is the proclamation for Peace Officer Memorial Week. Item E is proclamation for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. F is proclamation for International Firefighters' Day. G is the proclamation for Celebrate Drinking Water Week, and H is the proclamation for National Public Works Week. That's your items A through H. Let me mention that item C, that myself, council member Perkins, and Count Mayor Protim Thomas will need to recuse ourselves from that particular item, so I'll ask that item C be removed from that, and then let's act on A, B, D, E, F, and G, if you would, and H, if you'd like to, however you want to.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about item B?
Item B, okay.
On the, the map of that project, part of this greenway kind of consolidation, really, extend to bring different segments together, the section that's on 321 and the golf course, there's, there are two golf holes there, close to that part of the greenway. Have we got a plan for safety of those pedestrians and cyclists at that point, considering that there's a golf hole right there?
Mr. Phil Brand, I'll let you.
The project currently has not been designed. This is just conceptual, and they'll go back and take that into consideration once that's designed, if we get funded. So, this is just a plan to get us from Smith Crossroads over to Mulberry Rec.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other discussion on, on items A, B, D, E, F, G, or H? If not, I will ask for a question on that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve items A, B, D, E, F, and was there a G?
G and H.
G and H, as presented.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Veal makes a, a motion to approve items A, B, D, E, F, G, and H on the consent agenda. If no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. And now we will deal with item C, since the, the members of this board are members of the Yokefellow Board of Directors, we will recuse ourselves from that. Councilmember Purdue, I will ask that, if you will, to, to handle this on that particular item.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
First thing we need to do is, is to make a motion, as previously noted, that the, the mayor and councilmember Perkins and Mayor Protim Thomas sit on that board, so based on the advice of council and discussion with city manager, they do indeed to be recused, so we would ask for a motion for that recusal.
So moved.
Alright, Councilman Stevens makes the motion to recuse those three, just from this portion of the meeting. There'll be, once this vote is over, they will come back into the meeting without having to be, another motion be made. So, all in favor of Councilman Stevens' motion for the recusal, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. And that carries 5-0. As Mayor mentioned in the reading of the consent agenda items, item C is an amendment to an agreement previously issued to Yokefellow. Just again, for the benefit of the public, it's an approval of an amendment as requested by the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to amend the sub-recipient agreement between the city of Lenore and Caldwell County Yokefellow Incorporated. This addendum will reallocate $50,000, $50,764.11 from the first agreement signed on August 28th of 2020, to the second agreement signed on October 21st of 2020. Reallocating this funding will allow Caldwell County Yokefellow to meet the demands and to use the additional funding to pay for activities described in the second agreement. Any questions, any discussion of item C from the council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept or reject item C?
I make a motion that we approve item C as submitted.
Okay, councilmember Presswood makes a motion to accept item C. Any further discussion? All in fever of accepting, all in favor of accepting item C, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. And that carries also 5-0.
Thank you, Councilmember Purdue, for doing that. Thank y'all for handling that, that situation. We are, like I say, we are honored to serve and proud to serve on the Yokefellow Board, but we want to make sure that things are done in the, in the proper fashion, as, as far as funding goes in that kind of situation. So, thank you for that. Alright, we'll move on then. Next on our agenda is the request and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, please do so at this time. If you, if you'll come to the mic and give our clerk your name and address, for both y'all and your address, you got it? Okay. Well, please give it for us, if you don't mind.
Okay. Hi there. I am Laura Bush at Lachek. This is my husband, Scott. And first of all, I want to say I've never been to one of these meetings. This is very interesting to me, and thank you all for your service. I mean, there's a lot that you do for the city, so we appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
It's kind of ironic, we're here for Celebrate Drinking Water Week because we're bringing up an issue with our water meter. We have an unusual situation. We live at the end of Charlesmont. We're actually on Severt Circle, and our property borders Georgetown Estates. So, since the month of April, we have apparently used 250,000 gallons worth of water, and we have contacted the water department. Mr. Beal had them contact us, and they've spoken to my husband. This morning, Kevin Pritchard and Derek from the water department actually got out in the woods with me and walked around to help me try to find this water leak, and we were not successful. We have had a plumber come over. Derek has been over one other time before. I think the water meter has been checked as well. And I'm, besides the fact that we have a huge water bill now and we can't find the leak, we don't want to be wasting water like that. I would urge the city to consider getting equipment to help citizens like us, because we know of at least one other person that's having a similar issue.
Hundred thousand gallons.
But we are having a water specialist?
Yes, they're coming up, they're coming out of, they're...
Carterville.
Carterville, yeah. The American Leak Detection is the name of the company. They're gonna bring out their stuff and see if they can pin it down. I mean...
Right. So, if, if anyone has heard of any other issues like this, or can offer any suggestions, we would appreciate it. But we are trying to do our part to, if the leak's on our property, we'll certainly get it fixed, because that's what we want to do.
Right. Thank you for coming and presenting this to us. I know that you're working with Mr. Thomas and the Public Utilities Department on this.
I've spoken to him twice.
I mean, Radford, I don't know, would you, you wouldn't want to address anything to it? You're welcome to. If not, we'll, we'll take it, I'm certain, I know you're taking it under consideration, and we will continue looking into this situation and hopefully come to some sort of a...
Resolution.
Yeah, resolution to it at some point in time, so. So, thank you for that. Thank you for being with us. We do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move then on to reports and boards of commissions. Tonight, we have Mr. Rick Oxford, our planning administrator with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, will hold the second of two public meetings to receive public comments regarding the FY2022 Action Plan for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Consortium Home Program as part of the five-year consolidated plan as submitted. This plan is required, as required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, outlines the goals and action plans of the city of Lenore and the Uniform Consortium Home Program and its use of Community Development Block Grant, which is CB, CDBG, and home funds for the fiscal year 2022, beginning on July 1st, 2022, and ending July 30th, 2023. The city of Lenore serves as the lead entity for the Uniform Consortium. Rick, thank you, and we welcome you here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Well, it's that time of year, we do this every year, action plan for the, for these two programs, the CDBG and the home program. And both of these are federally funded programs, or funds that come to the city from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city is what they call an entitlement city, and so based on your population and other data, they declare you're entitlement city, and therefore you're funded every year with the CDBG funds. The home program is a little different. Back in 1996, we formed the Uniform Consortium, which is a gathering of all 28 local governments in the four county area, and a consortium, as defined by HUD, must be contiguous. We, we did get all 28 members, or local governments, to participate. We didn't have to. We could have just said, okay, Caldwell County and, you know, Burke County and, so it's Burke County, it's Alexander Burke, Caldwell County. So, so that money comes to the Uniform Consortium, but we had to choose or pick a lead entity, and the city of Lenore has served as the lead entity since the program's inception in 1996. And I might say that they've done an excellent job. They've made the process for me really smooth. Because we, we work with the manager, we work with Nadine Hood, Donna Bean, and the city, well, city staff, Nadine cuts all the checks, Donna has all the money coming in, and so they just make it a smooth process. And our activities in that home program are, well, we do down payment assistance for first-time home buyers, and sometimes those transactions happen really quickly, and we have to be very responsive in getting that down payment of check cut in a timely manner, delivered to the closing attorneys. Because when you're dealing with realtors and lenders, you know, they wait till the last minute, and then it's, hurry up, let's make everything happen, you know? So, I'd like to say the city staff does an excellent job on that. Both, well, let me talk about the CDBG program. I don't have dollar amounts, because we don't have a, a budget from HUD yet, so that's forthcoming. So, what I talk about will be based on last year's numbers. So, as we get new numbers, we, we'll adjust those, the numbers I talk about proportionally. So, we're anticipating, based on last year's, last year's numbers, that we will receive $164,146 in CDBG funds. Our activity for that is public facilities, and with the public facilities funds, we, we've done that, well, we've done lots of different activities. We've done the, the greenway, we've done the J.E. Broihill Park renovations. We've done the Greenway, we've done the J.E. Broihill Park renovations. Over the years, we've bought and tore down structures like Blackwater Hospital, Smithy's So, but now we're spending money on the old Lenore High School complex, and that includes the gym, the auditorium, and Matt Cook Stadium. And so, those funds will be used to further that renovation, okay? With the home program, we have, last year, we received $1,154,095. We also get program income as we loan people money for down payment assistance. The down payment assistance program is, we provide funds, zero interest, zero monthly payment. They pay it back if and when they sale, refinance, or otherwise transfer the property. Half of the loan is forgiven at the 10-year anniversary of the program, so. But HUD also has a cap on how much money they can make, so their income has to be below 80% of the area median income per family size. And then they've got a maximum purchase price for an existing home, they got a maximum purchase price for a new construction. So, you know, getting the people to have enough money to buy a house and still be under that income limit, and then in today's market, you know, there just aren't any houses available. So, we're, at one time, we was doing 100 houses a year. Now we're down to about 25. But our assistance has increased. Before, we used to do just $5,000, now we can do up to $30,000 per, per house. So, it's really 20, we do 20% of the purchase price, capping that 30,000.
What happens if there's unused funding from one year?
I'm sorry?
What happens if there's unused funding?
It just rolls over into the next year, yeah. So, the, so we do have money budgeted in the down payment assistance program, and this year, oh, I was speaking about the program income, we're anticipating getting $300,000 in program income, that's just sort of a, a guess, based on what we've received in the past, or what we know we're going to receive. We assist multifamily housing developers, we make them a loan, max loan is 300,000, and those are all low-income housing tax credit projects, which is, they, it's a competitive process, these developers are, across the state, are trying to get funding through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and they're trying to get low-income housing tax credits. And so they come to me, if they're doing one in our four county area, and they ask for a letter of commitment to that project. And if it's funded, then we will make them a loan, it's usually 300,000, 2% loan, and they pay it back over 20 years. So, we're, we're constantly getting that money back, and then as a, first-time home buyer sells their house, then we're getting either all of it back or half of it back. So, we're always getting something back when they, when they sell. So, total of what we receive from HUD and what we receive in program income, we're sort of estimating at $1.4 million. And then we plan on using $743,000 toward down payment assistance, that would allow us to do approximately 25 first-time home buyers. We always set aside what we call, for Chodos, community housing development organizations, that's nonprofit organizations doing housing-related activities. We set aside 15%, we're required to do so by HUD, and so that would be $173,000. And we do have some letters of commitment to those multifamily housing developers out there that have been funded, so we're trying to play catch-up with that. And so, we're going to budget $307,000 for that. And then we'll have a contingency fund of 10%. So, I wanted to say, let's see, we have the, with the multifamily, we've probably helped create throughout the four counties, 950 rental units, and a lot of those are senior rental units. They're all low, low to moderate income units. And we've got probably 350 waiting to happen, that have been funded, it just hasn't started, you know, yet. So, projects similar to Cat's Corner, and I'm not including Cat's Corner in my 950, And, and probably to date, we've assisted, I don't know, 3,100 first-time home buyers throughout the program, or throughout the years. But it, we also, with the, the grants pay administrative services, and the city contracts with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer those programs to comply with all the federal rules and regulations. And the city staff helps me do my job, and.
How did they help? I'm trying to understand that a little bit.
Well.
Have to deal with him.
Deal with him, that is a lot.
I have to deal with him, and I have to deal with the mayor, and I have to deal with Nadine Hood. Nadine, as, as I get a, an invoice from, let's say we're doing work on this, the high school, or if I, if I get a client that's needing the down payment assistance funds, or if I'm writing a check to a multifamily housing developer, I send those invoices to Nadine, Nadine cuts the checks. And then, of course, Donna does the accounting. I deal with this lady here to get signatures, because we sign a lot of stuff, don't we, Mayor?
Yes, we do. I was going to say, we sign a lot of documents that we.
But I could, I could not do my job without, without everybody, okay? But I would like to say Nadine is, she's.
She's a girl.
She's, she's always there to, you know, so, we're constant, we talked to her three or four times or more a week, you know, because we're always having some check cut. Also, we work with the ladies on the first floor, as we receive money back from somebody paying us off, or we receive money from a, we get an annual payment from those multifamily housing developers, they pay us once a year. Anytime we get money back, we take and log in the money downstairs with the city staff there. Yeah.
I learned something every year, every time we have these meetings, and it's starting to kind of come together, but I think if there's ever a reimbursement for staff time, is that, how's that allocated? Is it through programmers, or?
Well, we, we do get admin monies.
Okay, I don't know.
We, we do get admin monies that, well, and the admin monies are used to pay for our contract, they're also used to, to pay for, like, ads in the paper, and.
Is that the, is that the portion that the city gets reimbursed? I'm talking about that.
Well, and then whatever is left.
Uh huh.
Can Beach, we can use to charge as city staff time.
And what happened, how's that just allocated and distributed?
It goes back to the city to reimburse us for our time.
Yeah, whatever is left over.
Donna's mine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
It helps pay their salary.
Okay.
Whatever's left over at the end, I do that at the end, and then I have a, have a check cut to the city.
So they get some of their money.
So, and I guess it goes back in the general fund?
Because we are the lead agency for those 28 municipalities, are we not?
Yes.
Yeah, we are. Comes through us.
So that, and you get some, some from the CDBG program, and you get more from the home program. And that's, that's sort of a paying back the city for staff time and the time in trouble, putting up with me, you know?
Paying and suffering.
Paying and suffering. Any other questions of, of Rick? We are in a, we are in a public, what do we call it?
Hearing.
Public hearing, thank you.
And, and as soon as I get, as soon as I get new numbers from HUD, we will make all the changes, and everything will be changed proportionately, and we'll submit that to HUD, and we have to do that in order to get the city to sign a contract, get you to sign a contract with HUD, and then that's the process we do to actually get the money each year.
Is there an acceptance of us required pending that information, though?
Right, it's, the item B, you got to come in on.
Okay.
Okay, we're still in the public hearing. Any other questions, comments, or anything while we're in the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing and move on to action, which is item B, I think, the FY 2022 Action Plan and 2022 Uniform Consortium Home Plan. This would be approval of those action plans for the City of Lenore Consolidated Plan and approval of the Uniform Consortium Home Program as submitted by Mr. Rick Oxford, the Plan Administrator. So I think, I guess we need to approve that, need a motion for approval of these action plans as presented.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve.
A motion from Councilmember Perkins that we approve the FY 2022 Action Plan and the FY 2022 Uniform Consortium Home Plan. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that carries, thank you, Rick.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your, your coming with us for these two times.
Okay, I'll be seeing you for signatures.
I know you will. You and I see each other quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, we'll move on to the agenda to our important recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, some items for information this evening. This Thursday is the National Day of Prayer, it'll be observed at noon time on the square, invite you to come out for that service, normally lasts about 30 minutes or so, but please come out for that if you have time to do that. This weekend, we have a cruising event scheduled for Saturday, May 7th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. Next Monday, on the 9th, at noon, the City-City Service Committee will meet. The Caldwell County Economic Development Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 10th, at 8:00 a.m. We have an LTDA meeting, I think, scheduled for 4 o'clock on Thursday, May 12th. We have a Lenore Business Advisory Board on Thursday, May 12th. I know earlier, the chief mentioned the Peace Officer Memorial Stand Down Service, which will be at the courthouse at 6:00 p.m. on that Thursday, the 12th, as well. We also have a upcoming budget work session on Thursday, May 19th, at 6 o'clock, Third Floor City Hall, and we'll have additional sessions on Tuesday, May 24th, and Thursday, May 26th, if needed. Also, as Joshua reminded me, we need to go back and announce the Bike Festival will be held on Saturday, the 14th, and this is a family-friendly event focused on bicycling and outdoor activity, be held in downtown Lenore, and I think the times are.
10 to 3.
10 to 3. So invite everybody out to that as well.
What was that date again?
It's Saturday, May 14th. And then lastly, just for information purposes, the city offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th, and that's the Memorial Day holiday.
So right now, the work session we have for the budget will be the 19th.
Correct.
And then the others are only necessary if we need to.
Correct, we'll have, well, the one will be at the Committee of the Whole if needed, since that's already scheduled for the, for the month, and.
And that's the 24th.
Correct. And 26th, if needed.
That's Tuesday.
Any, any questions?
You might, you might add that Farmer's Market opens May 14th.
That's correct.
Saturday.
And let me also echo the comments earlier for all of our staff, I know we're honoring folks tonight, and just thank them all for what they do, they work hard every day, and we're here 24/7, seven days a week for most of us, so I just appreciate everyone, just want to publicly recognize that.
Thank you for that, that's very true. We appreciate all that our, our staff and department heads do in this, in this community, not department, the whole staff does, in, in, you know, keeping our city going so well.
Mr. Mayor, that, that staff and Mr. Hildebrand makes our job a lot easier as councilpeople.
It does, by all means.
And I, I would echo that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By all means. Anything else, Mr. Hildebrand?
That's all I have, is questions.
There is a airport meeting tomorrow that was scheduled from the end of April till May, May the 4th tomorrow, on that one, so that's not on the list, but we do have an airport board meeting then.
Only if the next item gets approved.
That's very true. All right, we appreciate that report, so we need now to go to a report and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
I think to report.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the report and recommendations of my, the mayor's office, and I do have some board appointments, you were, you were given a, a different sheet tonight, updating some of those, well, hello? On the, for reappointments, let me present first, let's do the top ones first, we have some re, the appointments that we kind of need to do, we need to vote on tonight because they have expired. As you know, we are working on trying to get our, all of our board appointments done, we run them from July 1 through June 30th, so that we, we're only making these appointments at those times of the year. The years will be the same, I mean, will be different for everything appointed, but we just do it for starting it on, you know, for the years on that, those dates, and we're trying to get, they've been working on that, our city staff has, and we're getting it back in place. That's why you have this list of, of names tonight, to catch up on with that. So, the first reappointments are, we need to do and vote on tonight, would be for the Housing Authority, Linda Ferguson, her term would expire of 2023. Linda is the resident member of the Housing Authority, she actually lives in the Housing Authority and serves on the board as a resident member. The Parks and Recreation Committee, Scott Barnett, his term would also expire in 2023. And Scott, I think is the chair of the Parks and Recreation Board, and we appreciate his service. And then on the Foothills Airport, my term on that has expired, and I need to be, if you want me to, be reappointed to that, and would expire in 2024 on that, and I do serve as the Chair of the Foothills Airport Authority. So I'll present those two, these three to you first, if we, if you will, consider those and go ahead and vote on that, and then we'll consider these other reappointments, I will give you those, and we won't be voting on those until our next meeting on May the 17th. So I'll present those first three to you for a vote tonight.
Make a motion that we approve those reappointments per the mayor's request.
Thank you very much, and any other discussion on that? I'll call for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Thank you, and by the way, Councilmember Purdue made that motion on that. All right, and our other reappointments, and these would be voted on on May the 17th, at our next meeting, and this would be for the ABC Board for a three-year term, Mr. Jerry Brooks, that would be 2025. For the LTDA, that's Lenore Tourism and Development Authority Board, four-year terms would be Dana Clark and Glenda Wilson, both would be 2026. For our LBAB, our Lenore Business Advisory Board, three-year terms would be for Margaret Forney to 2025, Darren McKinney, Gonzalo Vasquez, John Moore, and Sean Williams. For our Parks and Recreation Board, for two-year terms would be Shawna Banner, that'd be 2024, and Daryl Lippard. For our Lenore Housing Authority, they are now changed by statute to five-year terms on that board, that's the reason you see that, and that would be Debbie Smith, who was currently serving, and that's 2027. And our Planning Board for a three-year term would be Mr. Tim Scobie, 2025. All these are currently serving, these are for reappointments to those boards when the, when that time comes up for that, and we will be catching up those as we move forward on that. So I'll make, I'll present that to you, just for your information, and we will bring that up for our vote on the May 17th term. So anybody have any questions concerning our appointments and what we're trying to do? Our staff has been working hard to catch this up and get it so that it's more uniform, and we don't have them running out at different times of the months and trying to catch up. and trying to catch up with what's going on. This will make it easier for me and for all of us as we, as we move forward with that. So, thank you for that, there. All right, we will move then to any report and recommendations of any of our city council members. Anyone has anything? Thank you all for going, went last week to Wilmington. It was a great event for the league. We were well represented, maybe one of the best representations at the league, and they were all very, very proud to see that. We had a lot of things mentioned about, hey, Lenore's got a great contingent here, and, and we appreciate everyone being a part of that. Wilmington was a great place, and they hosted it and did a great job, and we thank the league for, for what they're doing. I understand next year, we'll be in Concord, what I was told today. So, hopefully, we can have another great contingent going forward as we move forward. You did receive tonight about the Town and State Dinner. If you can attend, that will be June the 1st. I assumed that we would go down on that day, try to do some things there, do the Town and State Dinner, spend the night, and then come back probably the next day, is what we try to do. So, please look at your calendar. If you can attend that, it's a great event. We sat down with our legislators. They ate, ate dinner with us. We get to talk about a lot of issues, and they do really attend that very well. So, it's one good way to be able to, to reach out to them. So, please keep that in your mind. Anything else to come before us tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.